Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day, Valonia Morse's Pariah, Ante Carl DeRoggi. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 73, Class 73. What did we learn in Class 72? Well, we're still reading all of the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906, Chapter 7. Now, we've finished up the reading, right? We read all four articles, Articles 120 to 123. But there's still some fundamentals we must still understand about Chapter 7, right? Because Chapter 7 is very important. Keep in mind that the Federal Reserve has seven members, right? Keep in mind that the Federal Reserve recognizes they understand Chapter 7 of our own Morse Treaty. They're following the instructions. That's why they're able to govern our Morse Treaties because they're using the number 7 that represents Chapter 7 of our own treaty, right? They know that the Moors at this time are absolutely incompetent. What does that mean? That we simply don't know how to follow instructions. It's not that we're not intelligent. It's not that we're not able. It's not that we don't understand ways and means. The problem is, we just didn't understand the instructions. And why is that? There's only two reasons why we didn't understand the instructions. Why is that? Because number one, we just never knew about the instructions. You can't enforce something unless you're aware of it, right? You must understand your options. Without options, you don't understand how to enforce those options. That's number one. What's number two? What's the second reason why? Is because there are Moors. And there are Negro blacks and colored leaders that know about this information. They have withheld it from us. They have blocked this information from us, and that is the truth. However, we cannot linger in the past. We must move on, right? It's called problem-solution. Problem-solution. Once you identify a problem, now you must now start to focus in on the solution. However, keep in mind that those Moors who have decided to be commercials, COINTELPRO, and sellouts will be a judge. We obviously know that the Colonists have done everything that they can to block this information. We know this. That should already be known. But we must always remember that our own people have blocked this information from us as well. That is the truth. Don't think that ANPAC Study Session as a form, as a platform, don't think that at ANPAC we're the only Moors that know about this information in order to share it. There's several Moors, leadership Moors, Moors that are stateless Moors that are leading stateless Moors down the wrong path. They know about these treaties. These treaties have been out since the 1800s. These treaties have been out since the early 1900s. The Charter of the United Nations has been out since 1945. Don't think that people haven't read these documents. They just don't talk about it aloud. Why? Because there's no money to be made in the cure. The money is in the maintenance. Pharmaceutical companies don't care about the cure. They care about the maintenance. There's a lot of Moors who're making money off the maintenance of keeping us in an incompetent status. That must be understood. And now the ANPAC Study Session along with other Moors out there who're doing a good job of sharing this information about what? Statehood. About what? Our various Morse Treaties. About what else? International law. Now that we're sharing the serum, right? The cure. We'll all start to heal ourselves. Because Islam, it must start with self. If you don't understand the options, how can you teach someone else? If you don't understand how to be competent, how can you teach someone else how to be competent? So right now, we're all learning competency as it relates to the customary norms of international law. And where was international law established? With the Moors. We established common law. We established jurisprudence, right? We established Mother's Law, Nature's Law. We established the law of the land. Understanding that constitutions is just an abstract of a piece of paper that all the nationals of a state have transferred their sovereignty into a contract that when we can all govern ourselves equally. The Constitution is paramount. There's nothing we can do to work around it. We cannot cheat the process. We must follow the instructions. Why do I say that? Because your treaty says you have to follow the instructions. Treaties is not something we can say, "Well, we'll think about following it." No, it's substantive law. It is the instructions. It is the law. And when you're not following the law, that makes you what? An outlaw. So we don't have no choice but to enforce the treaties. Because this is what our ancient mothers and fathers set forth. All right, let's get into the class. Now, as you know, ANPAC Study Session opens up with the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. For who? The pre-morjital people, right? However, who else is enacting constitutions? The Colonists. Why are they enacting constitutions? Think about it. Why do they have a constitution over each one of their trust territories? It's because they're following the instructions, right? They understand it's about constitutional laws in order to enact legislation in order to control the inhabitants of that land. This is what the Moors must understand. The good brother Nobudraw Lee said what? "I'm gonna leave the Europeans here long enough to teach us government." So you can do what next? Run the government. And our treaties already set forth obligations for Moors to enforce our own governments. We must understand that the Constitution is an obligation. It's not something that's a suggestion. We're obligated to enact constitutions. That's what the treaty says. We'll talk about that more today in terms of how to govern the affairs of our state. We'll also learn today how is it that the United Nations Charter ended up being the place where we have to deposit our constitution, right? I know Moors are asking the question, "Well, why do we have to deposit our constitution with the General Assembly members of the United Nations?" We'll talk about that today. We'll clear up some misconceptions, some misinformation, right? We'll get into the history so we can see the substantive law of why we have to follow these instructions, all right? Okay, let's get into the class, Class 73. All right, so as you know, we left off reading in Chapter 7 of the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906. We went into a deep dive of general provisions, right? We understood the word provision simply means following instructions, right? Stay on the Yellow Brick Road so you can finally get home, right? What did the good witch tell Dorothy? "Oh, Dorothy, you was home the whole time. It's in your head. All you gotta do is click your heels three times." What did the three times represent? The triple principle. Where's the triple principle? Sovereignty and independence. What's the second principle? Integrity of domains. What's the last triple principle? Economic liberty without any inequality. The Colonists was telling us all how to go home through the triple principle that's set forth in our own treaty of the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906 preamble. You see how they put it right in front of our faces in order to deal with their own karma? They say, "Hey, we told y'all. You just didn't comprehend." Right? They put Dorothy in silver slippers representing Oz. Oz represents what? Ounces, silver, et cetera, right? Then they put her in red slippers. What does that represent? The cherry tree, the Moroccan empire. Then I show you the monopoly board where the monopoly is in red. They're sending signs and symbols. Who's overseeing the monopoly board sitting in the middle? The bankers. More specifically, the Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve represents the number 7. Where did they get the number 7 concept from? Chapter 7 of the Act of Al-Dusers. They're following instructions and we're not. That's the difference. But we can change that now. We're aware of what we need to do. All right, let's get into this. Now, in Chapter 7, as we already know, in Article 121, right, let's start at Article 120 real quick as a recap. Okay, so we had Chapter 7, general provisions, which means following the instructions, follow the conditions. Article 120, "With a view to harmonizing its legislation, if the occasion arises with the engagement of contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps leading to enactment of such legislation as may be necessary so far as it concerns." So we have to now enact legislation. Do your thing. Okay, Article 121. "The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratification shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable." Right? So practicable means what? As soon as possible, right? Well, let's focus right here, Moors. A lot of Moors have a question. It says "at Madrid" in the treaty, right? But now, all of a sudden, now we're finding out that we don't deposit, we don't ratific-- we don't deposit after our ratification, we don't deposit at Madrid anymore. The instruction now says to do what? Under Charter of the United Nations, right? Charter of the United Nations says now you must deposit with them according to what? Article 102, right? We're learning about this. Article 102. Article 102 talks about what? Miscellaneous provisions. You notice they got miscellaneous provisions, instructions, right? Article 102, you go back to your treaty. Article 121, it talks about depository. It's in, it talks about what? General provisions. You go back to the Charter. Miscellaneous provisions. You see how they're following suit, right? But Moors say, "Well, okay, Article 102." "Okay, ANPAC Study Session, we're following along. We say, 'Okay, Jay Jermaine, you said we gotta now deposit our constitutions in our sacred treaties with the Charter members? Why do we have to do that? Why do we have to follow what they say, right? You think of them as 'they,' right? You think "them," 'they,' right? That's the main concept, right? And the reason why is because we don't know the history. So we get into assumptions and presumptions. We become sensitive because we simply don't know the history, the chain of events, the sequential order of how this came to be. We'll talk about that today. Okay, so what does it say in Article 102? That every state on planet Earth has to follow these instructions in order to get their independence of a state. All 55 states in Africa had to deposit their constitution with the United Nations. All 50-plus states in Europe had to deposit their constitution with the United Nations. All the states of the continent commonly known as northwest of Metzam, i.e. Morocco, had to deposit their constitutions with the United Nations. Let's find out why. Article 102 says, "Every treaty and every international agreement entered into by any member of the United Nations after the present charter comes into force shall, as soon as practicable, as soon as possible, be registered with the Secretary and published by it." These instructions. That you cannot enforce a constitution or a treaty unless you deposit with your Charter members. But Moors say, "Why do we have to deposit with them?" Let's take a look at the history. Here's the reason why. This is the Treaty Affairs of 1912. We've gone through this before. What happened in 1912? Protectorate Treaty between France and Morocco. France and the Sultan got together in 1912 to sign a treaty. And the Sultan gave France full power of the pen to oversee all of the Morse Treaties, to oversee the entire empire. That's what happened in 1912. So since the Sultan gave France the power of the pen to the point that even the Sultan couldn't even sign treaties anymore. The Sultan himself could not sign a treaty. France had to come in and sign the treaty. That's how much power the Sultan gave to France in 1912. What else happened? When the Sultan gave France the power of the pen, France automatically became the trustee, the manager, the power turnover of all of the Morse Treaties. All of the Morse Treaties. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1787. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836. The Madrid Convention of 1880. And the Act of Al-Dusers, 1906, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Any treaty that was signed with the Sultan with any state on planet Earth, France was overseeing every last treaty on planet Earth. So in order to keep the story short, then we'll get into the details, the substance, the context, right? What happened? So since France now, I'm giving you the quick brief. Now that France is overseeing all of the treaties, guess what happened? Now you go to Chapter 7, Article 123. Now you're gonna understand why the Charter, why we have to deposit the Charter. Article 123 says, "And last, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements of the signatory powers." Who are the signatory powers? All the Colonists. With Morocco, right? So all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements such as the Charter of the United Nations of 1945 was an arrangement. The Charter of the United Nations was a convention, was an assembly of states coming together, a type of states. European states, all types of states. And a lot of those states were parties to this treaty at one time or another. Listen. So the arrangements, anything that's happening in Morocco, any contract signed in Morocco remain enforced. Listen to this part. "It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail." What shall prevail? The Act of Al-Dusers of 1906 shall prevail over all Morse Treaties. Which means the Act of Al-Dusers also prevails over what? Any arrangements, right? Any conventions and any arrangements. The Charter, UN Charter of 1945 was an arrangement. Okay? Now, France is overseeing the empire from what year? 1912. Let's go back to it. I'm gonna simplify it for you. Don't worry about it. So France is overseeing the empire from 1912 all the way until March 2nd, 1956. They got the power of the pen from 1912 to March 2nd, 1956. So what happened in 1945? The Charter was enacted. France had the power of the pen to allow a Charter to be established in Morocco, commonly known as New York, right? The United Nations headquarters is located in New York, right? Let's go to it. New York. But where is New York located? Okay. In Morocco, right? So New York is located in Morocco, okay? So any treaties, any conventions, and any arrangements made in Morocco, France had the power of the pen over it. So the Sultan gave France the power to establish the Charter of the United Nations, to oversee the Charter of the United Nations because the Charter of the United Nations is what? A convention or an arrangement of all the signatory powers came together to enact something that happened in Morocco. So France had to get permission to transfer depositing treaties. Instead of those treaties now or your constitution being deposited, now we're back to Act of Al-Dusers, 1906, Article 121. Instead of everything now being deposited at Madrid, France had to get permission for everything to be deposited where? The United Nations headquarters. That's where? In Morocco. France is who agreed to allow this miscellaneous provisions of Chapter 16 to exist in 1945 because they had the powers if they were to suit it. So now, and at this time, keep in mind, Moors are asleep. Moors at this time are suffering from cotton to dissonance. Moors are out there now marching and praying. Moors are saying, "Man, you know what? We ain't Negroes no more. We call ourselves black. We don't use the word Negro no more. Now we got a new name, Black, and we proud." Think about it. Go back and look at your history. Who wasn't called Black at all times? We called what? Negroes, right? Colored, right? Africans. We called everything. We've been promoting up these misnomers. Now it's Black. Now it's what? African-American. Our name changes about every 25, 30 years. We get a new title, right? So what's happened? I'm taking my time. France agreed because they had the power of the pen on behalf of the Sultan to allow the Charter to exist for now everybody, including Moors who are acting their modern, organic states to have to deposit with the United Nations according to Article 102 because the Moors were asleep in 1945. We did not say, excuse me, objection. No, we were asleep. So we lost our right of decision-making because we were in a coma fighting the powers that be with a fist in the air. We had a black fist and a black pick picking our throat, leaving a pick in there with a black fist instead of having a treaty in our hands with a pen. So France is taking over. The Sultan has taken a hiatus. He letting France drive. Sultan's in the backseat like he's being chauffeured. And France is like a queen on a chessboard. France is acting like a queen on a chessboard. We all know the queen has absolute power on a chessboard, can go and do whatever she want on the board. That was France in this game of politics. And the Sultan let her do it. She, as in the all Charter, I mean, excuse me, all constitutions and states are female in character. So France is acting like a queen on a chessboard because the Sultan gave France a chance to run around the whole planet controlling the empire. The Sultan did this. So France had to agree to this. This is why Moors end up now having to deposit. Let's get into the substance. Okay, mother, let's go ahead and read the treaty. Start with the top.
Protectorate Treaty between France and Morocco, signed at Fairs on March 30th, 1912. The government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty desire us of inaugurating a regular regime in Morocco based upon international order and general security which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure the economic development of the country have agreed upon the following.
Okay, let's pause right there. Okay, so what happened? France and the Sultan allowed France to be inaugurated to oversee the regime of Morocco. What's inauguration? That's an office. Sultan, France is taking up the pen of the office of the Sultan. The Sultan gave France the pen. Say, "You take it. You run the whole gamut. You're the queen on the chessboard." This is a treaty. Treaty supreme of the land. Article 1, mother.
The government of the French Republic and His Majesty the Sultan have agreed to establish in Morocco a new regime comprising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory.
So let France see fit. They can oversee all the administration of all the treaties in every state on planet Earth. France can oversee all the judicial authority of planet Earth. France oversee education, economics, finance, military reforms which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory. Gave France the pen. This is why France agreed to allow the Charter to exist to take the deposit from Madrid over to now what? Was the common known as the West, right? The world knows this side of the continent is the west of Morocco, this part of the empire, right? Continue, mother.
This regime shall safeguard the religious status, the respect and traditional prestige of the Sultan, the exercise of the Mahfouz religion, and of all religious institutions, in particular those of the Habous. It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Maksim.
So what's the Sharifian Maksim? That's the government. So you got the Sultan and then the government. The Sultan is what? A ruler. But he's also put in place a government to control the empire. But now he's giving France power over at all the administration, right? All the judges, everything, mother.
The government of the Republic will come to an understanding with the Spanish government regarding the interests which this government derives from its geographical position and territorial possessions on the Moroccan coast. In like manner, the city of Tangier shall retain its recognized distinctive characteristic which will determine its municipal organization. Article 2. His Majesty the Sultan agrees that henceforth the French government, subject to prior notification to the Maksim, may proceed to such military occupation of the Moroccan territory as it may deem necessary for the maintenance of good order and the security of commercial transactions and may exercise every police supervision on land and within the Moroccan waters.
So the Sultan just gave France control of what? All land, right? Land law, all maritime, sea law, and all air rights. Continue.
Article 3. The government of the Republic pledges itself to lend constant support to His Sharifian Majesty against all dangers which might threaten His person or throne or endanger the tranquility of His states. The same support shall be given the heir to the throne and his successors.
That's not right there. It's a powerful article. Listen. Article 3. The government of the Republic pledges itself to lend constant support to His Sharifian Majesty against all dangers which might threaten His person, all dangers that might threaten His throne, or all dangers endanger the tranquility of His states. The Sultan overseen what? States. Not a state singular. What states did the Sultan oversee? All the states of the empire. Where's the empire? The empire's the world. We're proved that, even Europe. We're talking more specifically about Europe today, right? Also, we already know about this is the part of the empire we're standing on now, right? So when the Sultan oversees states, that means France also knows the Sultan oversees states. And now France oversees all of the European states, all the Moroccan lands on planet Earth. Check it out. "The same support shall be given the heir to the throne and his successors." The Sultan even gave the pen to France to oversee every last Sultan that came next. From 1912 all the way to 1956, had several different Sultans. And none of those Sultans had the power of the pen from 1912 to 1956. France had the power through a treaty that says France could do the same support shall be given the heir to the throne and his successors. So all the Sultans never had any power of the pen. France was controlling it. The Sultans just existed in name only. They had a fancy title, but they didn't have a pen. This is how the Charter of the United Nations came to be. We'll talk about that. Article 4.
This has a small states in it.
Yes, thank you, mother, for pointing it out. So you got the small states, right? Now, we all know organic states is capital S. Small case s is talking about more or less the United States of America and all that so-called several states that are not states, they're charters. So France oversees all organic states with a pen. France oversees all international organizations. France oversees all corporations. France oversees all charters. France oversees all firmans. France oversees all courts on planet Earth from 1912 to 1956. This is another reason why you had World War I and World War II because France was overseeing all of those states and their judges, their laws, and the taxation. So France is taxing all of the states. We'll learn about that today. Okay, Article 4. Be patient with me.
Article 4. Such measures as the new regime of the protectorate may require shall be established by decree upon the proposal of the French government by His Sharifian Majesty or the authorities to whom he may have delegated his power. The same procedure shall be observed in the matter of new regulations and of modifications of the existing regulations.
So what happened? The Sultan did what? He delegated his power to France. Now France is acting like a queen on a chessboard. Uncontrollable power. So much power the Sultan can't even stop France because they literally gave it away to get the pen. France, take the pen. France never gave it away. France never gave it back, never, to the very day of twenty twenty-two. France said, you know, in nineteen fifty-six, France says, instead of giving you back your pen, how about, I don't give it back to you, and you don't get it either, I can't have it, you can't either. They canceled the Treaty of Fes in nineteen fifty-six, they dissolved the Treaty of Fes in nineteen fifty-six. But France said, I don't have the pen, and the Sultan won't have it either, we'll talk about that, okay. Article five.
The French government shall be represented by His Sharifian Majesty by a Commissioner Resident General representative of all the power of the Republic in Morocco, who shall attend to the execution of the present agreement.
Okay, so, so the Sultan gave what to France? All the power. France, the Sultan gave what to France? All the power of the Republic, i.e. the empire. This is how the Charter of the United Nations came to be, Article one oh two, because France had to sign off on it to take it from Madrid to now over here in the West. This is why Moors gotta follow instructions, not deposit United Nations Charter, because France established this in nineteen forty-five. Continue.
The Commissioner Resident General shall be the sole intermediary between the Sultan and foreign representatives, and in the relations which these representatives maintain with the Moroccan government. In particular, he shall have charge of all matters relating to foreigners in the Sharifian Empire. He shall have the power to approve and promulgate on behalf of the French government all the decrees issued by His Sharifian Majesty.
See what just happened? Listen. The Commissioner, okay, what, what article are we on? Article five, right, article five. The Commissioner Resident General, who, who, who's now a manager for France, right? Like an ambassador, right? Uh, Minister Plenipotentiary, right, Attorney General, uh, Secretary of State, a lot of power, right? The Commissioner Resident General shall be the sole intermediary between the Sultan and foreign representatives. Who's, who's the foreign representatives, United States of America, et cetera, right, Great Britain, Germany, Spain, Portugal, right? The Vatican, right, Russia. All the states. Have to go with France before they can speak to the Sultan. But yet the Sultan told France, I don't even wanna talk to him, you take care of him. Listen. The Commissioner Resident General shall be the sole intermediary intermediary between the Sultan and foreign representatives, and in the relations with these representatives maintained with the Moroccan government. In particular, he shall have charge of all matters relating to foreigners in the Sharifian Empire. He shall have the power to approve and promulgate on behalf of the French government all the decrees issued by His Sharifian Majesty. So France is overseeing all the treaties. France is dealing with all the approval and promulgation of all treaties, conventions, and arrangements in Morocco according to Article one twenty-three of the Act of Obiseras. France overseeing every treaty that Morocco ever signed. Article six.
The diplomatic and counselor agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects and interests abroad. His Majesty the Sultan pledges himself not to conclude any act of an international nature without the previous approval of the French Republic.
You hear that? Let's read again. Article six, the diplomatic and counselor agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects and interests abroad. So who are the Moroccan subjects, it's Sojou or Moors subjects, they call themselves Negro, Blacks, and Coloreds, African Americans, Pan-Africans, and who else, Moorish Americans. These are the Moroccan subjects. Well, look, France got power where, interests abroad. That's the planet. Everywhere that there's a treaty between Morocco and another state, France oversees it abroad, that's the planet. That's crossing state lines, that's cross, crossing over continent borders, that's crossing overseas. That's law, land, air, water, right? Listen. His Majesty the Sultan pledges himself not to conclude any act of international nature without the provision, previous approval of the French Republic. Sultan had to go to France to get permission to even speak on an international level. The Sultan had to go to France to even make a special appearance regarding anything on an international level. This is why, when you study the case of France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, the Sultan never made a special appearance in the International Court of Justice between nineteen fifty and nineteen fifty-two, why? Because France, in this treaty says, only France could go and represent Morocco, not the Sultan. Article seven.
The government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty reserve unto themselves the right to determine by mutual agreement the basis of a financial reorganization which, while respecting the rights conferred upon bondholders of the Republican, of the Moroccan public loans, shall make it possible to guarantee the commitments of the Sharifian Treasury and to collect regularly the revenues of the empire.
So France is responsible for collecting the money. France is the debt collector of planet Earth during the years of nineteen twelve to nineteen fifty-six. Keep in mind, France is overseeing even the European states. We will learn more about that.
Article eight, His Sharifian Majesty declares that in future, he will refrain from contracting directly or indirectly any public or private loan, and from granting in any form whatever, any concession without the authorization of the French government.
The Sultan couldn't go borrow no money, couldn't talk about no money, couldn't do anything with any money without France overseeing it. Let's listen. Article eight, His Sharifian Majesty declares that in future he will refrain from contracting directly or indirectly any public or private loan, and from granting in, in any form whatever, any concession without the authorization of the French government. France got the pen. Sultan gave it away. Article nine.
The present treaty shall be submitted to the government of the French Republic for ratification, and the instrument of the said ratification shall be handed without delay to His Majesty the Sultan.
So now France had to go back and do what, ratification, depository, and promulgation, had to follow instructions. You see I put the instructions in Article nine? This is, Moors gotta understand these three words, ratification, depository, and promulgation. France had to go back and ratify through its government to make it a part of their law, in order to enforce it. Then they had to come back and do what, deposit with who, the Sultan. And promulgated through announcement. You see what happened? Okay, that's Article nine, that's the last article, okay, oh, got some more there, there you go, mother.
In what, in faith whereof, the undersigned have drawn up the present act and have affixed their seals thereto. Fes, March thirtieth nineteen twelve, eleven, Revaya, thirteen thirty.
Okay, so as we can see, Moors. Let's go back to the top. This treaty of Fes, signed on March thirtieth nineteen twelve, changed everything. Because France is now overseeing the entire Moors empire throughout the world. So what happened? So now that France is overseeing the empire, now you end up with this. This is the French flag and Moroccan flag. They become interdependent to each other, they became a two-sided coin. Because France is overseeing the empire. Right? This is what's happening. France overseeing the empire by what, a treaty, the Sultan gave you permission to do it. This is what's happening, okay? So now, France even oversees this particular geographical location, which is only a small part of the empire. But it's more germane to what we're talking about as it relates to us, since we stand on the land over here in the West. France overseeing all this, which means France was overseeing what as well? All of this. All the so-called fifty states, they're not states, they're charters, constituent charter states. Right? But even though they're municipal corporations, France oversees all municipal corporations from twenty years nineteen twelve to nineteen fifty-six, why? Because of Article one twenty-three, right, let's go back to Article one twenty-three. This is the main staple point, Moors gotta understand, Article one twenty-three is what we have to understand. So France overseeing this treaty, Act of Obiseras nineteen oh six, why, France gave the pen, says, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain enforced, it is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, Act of Obiseras, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail. What shall prevail, the Act of Obiseras, which gives France power over what? All treaties, all conventions, all arrangements, which arrangements of what, corporations. And France is collecting what, taxes, and overseeing all the ports. Seeing all, overseeing all the Moors ports, the trade routes. They're controlling the entire planet. How did the United Nations Charter come to be, how, how did France get involved in Charter? Quick history. After World War Two. France was involved with World War Two fight, right? France got weakened because of that war, they didn't have as much power in, around nineteen forty-three to nineteen forty-five. Germany was controlling France, okay, the Germans rolled in, was controlling France. The Germans wanted to control France, why did the Germans wanna control France?
Because they had control over all the other nations.
Because France had controlled the pen, so Germany's like, let me get that pen from you, brother. Right? But France then would fight back and get their independence in nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-five away from Germany. So what happens, okay, we're talking Charter, we, we're trying to keep it germane, okay, mother, from the top.
France and the origins of the UN. Despite France being one of the big five, the five states who are permanent members of the UN Security Council and hold veto power.
Pause, who are the big, who are the big five members who sit in the permanent Security Council of the United Nations? It's who, France, right, Great Britain.
China.
China.
Russia.
Russia.
France.
United States.
United States.
United States of America, right, that's the big five, right, okay, start all over, mother.
Despite France being one of the big five, the five states who are permanent members of the UN Security Council and hold veto power, France was largely left out of the planning process for the new UN Charter organization tasked with maintaining peace post-World War Two, and was only reluctantly added later after most of the planning was done. A twenty-six nation conference not including France, which was under Nazi occupation and thus not legally a government, where governments pledged to continue their fight during World War Two against the Axis Powers. In a series of conferences and forums over the next few years, mainly behind closed doors, the then Big Three allied powers of World War Two, known as the United States of America, the United Kingdom, and the Soviet Union, began drafting plans for an international organization to maintain international peace, building off the mistakes of the earlier League of Nations. There are several reasons why France, France was excluded from talks at this stage. The main being that the collapse of France almost overnight in nineteen forty, from which he was still in tatters until at least nineteen forty-four, destroyed its great power image. His decisive defeat by the German army made it difficult to, to deny that France was simply no longer the political and military power it had once been. This, along with France's relatively limited contribution to the war effort thus far, meant that at least in the eyes of the Big Three, France no longer deserved a place at, in the, at the top table of the new international organization. Furthermore, Franklin Roosevelt, the then leader of the United States Municipal Corporation, along with other high-ranking officials, was suspicious of Charles de Gaulle, the self-proclaimed leader of the Free French, and thus hesitant to collaborate with him due to his Napoleonic traits. France was hurt and humiliated by this exclusion, especially considering its important role in establishing the League of Nations after World War One. France wasn't invited to forums such as Dunbar and Oaks Conference in nineteen forty-four, where the Big Four, USA, UK, USSR, and China deliberately, deliberated over proposals for the functioning of what was to become the UN, to present to the other twenty-six nations, and never formally consulted, they were nonetheless aware such planning was taking place. British Prime Minister Winston Churchill urged American President Roosevelt, Franklin Roosevelt, to restore France to its status of a, as a, of a major power after the liberation of France in August nineteen forty-four. Following much negotiation, once France had established and legitimized a new government, the provisional government of the French Republic, PGFR, later seated in nineteen forty-six by the Fourth Republic, it was reluctantly granted a permanent spot on the UN Security Council in the future international organization by way of its traditions, ideals, and importance, even though after all important planning steps had already been negotiated and finalized without its contribution. However, the United States of America knew that in order to avoid the ill fate of the League of Nations, the United Nations would need effective sanction powers, an idea pushed by France in nineteen nineteen during the establishment of the League, but which had been rejected by the other allied powers. As a charter member of the United Nations and one of the five permanent members of the Security Council, France plays an active and integral role in many areas of UN activity. Further, France, France, French, France is one of the two working langu, oh. Further, French is one of the two working languages of the UN Secretariat, the other being English, see the Charter of the United Nations article.
Article thirty-nine, sorry, I meant to put article thirty-nine. Okay, so what's happening here? Okay. This was a quick history lesson, okay, quick timeline. So France gets caught up, get caught up in World War Two. Germany now has conquered France. France fought back and got their independence back around nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-five. Right around the same time, the United States of America thinks France is, is, is been occupied by Germany, United States of America says, yeah, let's go and create the Charter of the United Nations. They were, the United States of America could now become the new France on planet Earth. The United States of America thought France was done. The United States of America wanted to take over the pen and say that since France was no longer existed, the United States of America was gonna take over the power of the pen of the empire, you see what's happening? So France all of a sudden bounces back like Rocky, right? So what happens next, France says, excuse me, we back, right? So France comes over to the United Nations, where they had just started establishing around nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-five, United Nations Charter is starting to assemble and come to be concluded, to finalize this in nineteen forty-five. Great Britain tells, uh, United States of America, uh, you need to stop acting like France don't exist. We need to recognize France, it still has the power of the pen. And France can come in and say, that Charter cannot exist without France consenting to the exist, for the Charter to exist. So now, France is gone from the bottom, they think France is gone, France all of a sudden pops up to the very top. How did France end up popping to the top? Listen. Now you come over to the Charter. Right, come on to the Charter, right? The Charter now, in Article thirty-nine, okay, let's go to Article thirty-eight of the Charter of the United Nations. Look what it says, okay. Chapter three, Procedure, Article thirty-nine, the official languages of the court shall be French and English. Those are the official languages of international law. No matter what language you speak on planet Earth, and when you write an international law, you gotta write it in what, either French or English when you communicate with another state on planet Earth. So all of a sudden, France is at the bottom, they think France is out, and France pops up to the top and says, nah, we still in the game, why, because France was still controlling the pen, because France had not relinquished their control over the empire. So they come back strong and say, nah, it's gonna be French and English, everything written, it controls what? Courts. Right, because the treaty gave France power of what, let's go back to the Treaty of Fes nineteen twelve. It gave France power of what? All things administrative and judicial. Right? Okay. So now Article thirty-nine continues to say what? Okay, let's let's go to, okay, here we go. "Case shall be conducted in French. The judgment shall be delivered in French. If the party agrees that the case shall be conducted in English, the judgment shall be delivered in English." So English is subordinate to what? French. Go ahead, I thought French was out. Nah, the United States of America. So you thought France got captured by Germany and Fr- and Fr- France came back strong with their pen and said, China, what y'all trying to do with that Charter? You can't do it, I didn't give you consent with my pen to let the Charter exist. But now that I'm back on top because I beat Germany, we gonna make everything in French or English? Section two. "In the absence of an agreement as to which language shall be employed, each party made in the pleadings use the language which it prefers. The decision, of course, shall be given in French and English." That's which one you wanna prefer? French or English? Watch this, let me give you example. Let's go back to the Act of Algeciras nineteen oh six. You see that's English? Guess what's on the other side of it? French. Now, we all know the power is always to the left. In government, in flags, especially color guard, we all know flags to the left have the power and everything to the right of it is subordinate. Right? When you go look at a wedding, right? You go to a wedding, the wife is standing on, when you're facing it, the wife is standing on what? The left, the husband's standing on the right, right? So when you're facing the couple getting married, the wife is here, husband's here. Why? Cause the power is always over here. The person standing to the left of the person is always subordinate. The husband is subordinate even in the marriage contract. People don't realize that. The wife is the power according to how they set up the procedure. So French is to the left, English is to the right. Why is that? Okay, go back to the Charter. Because French comes before English. Why? Because France, even in nineteen forty-five, is controlling what? The pen of what? The empire, which controls over all arrangements and all conventions. The Charter is a convention, it's an assembly of states coming together. France oversees it. This is how we went from having the depauling of Madrid to now depauling where? Over here in the West, commonly known as New York, but New York is where? In Morocco, cause France oversees what? Morocco. And all arrangement, including municipal corporations. Listen. Okay, so, what is this? This is a map for all our viewers at home. Down here is Africa. All this up here is Spain, Italy, right? All the European states. This is a map of nineteen twelve. So the Treaty of Fes signed when? Nineteen twelve, right? Nineteen twelve. So let's go to the map that talked about nineteen twelve. So France is overseeing all these states, let's increase the size for our viewers at home. So France is overseeing all these European states. They're overseeing Portugal, right? Portugal, Spain. Obviously, France is overseeing Italy. They oversee Hungary, Austria-Hungary, right? They oversee Romania, Bulgaria. Anybody who has a treaty with Morocco, France is overseeing, including who?
Germany. Oh, Russia.
Russia, but it wasn't Russia then, what was it? Soviet Union. Before these other co- um, European states started to claim their independence, right? Such as Ukraine, so to speak, right? So new modern state, right? But it was all Russia nineteen twelve. France is overseeing all this. Well, how do we know? What's the proof of that? Okay. Let's go back. To eighteen eighty. This is the Treaty of Madrid, commonly known as Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, it's a Morse treaty, right? And the Sultan, according to Article seven, let's go down to Article seven, quick history lesson. Article seven. Article seven. First things first. Article seven says, "They shall first annually to the said minister or less," who? The colonists, "of the name of the persons protected by them or by their agents throughout the states of the Sultan of Morocco." See, the Sultan owns states. See, we seen in another treaty. This is another treaty. It was in the Treaty of Fes nineteen twelve. Now it's in the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, that the Sultan owns all the states. What states? Okay, let's go to the bottom. Who are the signatory powers? Who are the signatory powers? Who signed this? Okay. Okay. United States of America, Germany, Austria-Hungary, Belgium signed this treaty, Spain signed this treaty, France signed this treaty in eighteen eighty before they signed the Treaty of Fes of nineteen twelve. See, so France was a signatory power. The kingdom for Denmark, right? Who else? Italy, you see, Italy. Morocco obviously signed it. Netherlands. Portugal, Sweden, and Norway. Where's the International Court of Justice located? Okay. Netherlands. So the Netherlands signed this treaty, right? So let's go back to the map. Go back to European map. So all those names I just mentioned to you, these are similar names that you see up here. So since they signed the treaty in eighteen eighty, they came a part of the Moroccan treaties. In nineteen twelve, we speed up to nineteen twelve, France signs a treaty with Morocco that gave France the pen over all these states because France oversees any state that signed our treaties. Now you see how World War One and World War Two popped off because France overseeing all the money? They see all the jurisdiction over what's commonly known as the Commonwealth. France is overseeing all of Europe and where else? Okay. And all this part of the empire too, et cetera. Let's look at the timeline. Okay, I got a pretty extensive list here, about three pages, okay? Mother, you got a question?
So does that, they were trying to like break France's hold on all the money?
Yes.
That's why World War One and World War Two?
Not, not specifically, but France was a part of keeping the mayhem going because there's a queen on a chessboard of planet Earth collecting taxes, controlling courts, controlling administration, controlling education, controlling everything, the police, the army, they controlling everybody's armies. Right? They controlling, okay. Treaty of Fes nineteen twelve. Treaty of Fes nineteen twelve. France can, France controlled what? Military reforms. Over anybody that signed Moroccan treaties. Right? Okay. Speaking of signing treaties, okay, let's go back to it. Act of Algeciras nineteen oh six. Has signatory powers, right? Who's some of the signatory powers? Okay, let's go through a few. Okay. Germany, here we go again, right? Germany, who else? Belgium, Spain, United States of America, right? Who else? France, Great Britain, Netherlands. Who else? Portugal, Russia, Sweden, et cetera, right? Okay, which is the same similar names up here on the map. So since they signed the Act of Algeciras and France got power over their states, they're controlling, France is controlling the gambits as a queen on a chessboard, all the military, all the taxes, administration, judicial branches, education, et cetera, et cetera. They're controlling the ports, the trade, everything. Okay, let's go to timeline, mother.
Okay. Timeline of France and its if-so-facto jurisdiction over the Moroccan Empire in harmony with the Sultan of Morocco. One. "The eighteen thirty-six bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship Fr- Friendship Signatory Powers was the United States of America and the Sultan of Morocco. The eighteen eighty multilateral Madrid Convention Signatory Powers were France, the United States of America, Great Britain, Germany, Catholic Majesty, Austria-Hungary, Prussia, Belgium, Spain, Denmark, Italy, Portugal, Sweden, Norway, Netherlands, the Catholic Majesty, and the Sultan of Morocco."
Okay, pause right there. While we go through the timeline, I'm showing you all the names of these states that France ended up with power over in nineteen twelve. I'm gonna show you a timeline based upon the power that the Sultan gave France. You gotta understand what's happening with all these world wars that happened back in World War One, World War Two, and how the Moors continue to be subjugated.
Speaking of which, where did the Moors come in? Cause I thought that those two world wars were fought over the Moors.
Oftentimes they are, cause the Moors exist in Europe, right? All the statues over there are the Moors royalty. You must understand, all the European states are just what? Trustees over trust territories, commonly known as France, et cetera. Portugal, Spain, these are all contemporary words overseeing a jurisdiction that used to have different names. The Moors named those lands. The colonists came in and changed the names. That's what happens when you conquer land, you change the name, and let's say everybody knows this land is conquered. All right? Okay. Let's continue. So so what did we learn so far? So far, eighteen eighty, the multilateral Treaty of Madrid, right? Is listing all these parties, that France got power of these states, okay? Let's continue.
Three. "The nineteen oh sixth, nineteen oh six Act of Algeciras Multilateral Convention Signatory Powers were France, the US of A, Great Britain, Germany, Catholic Majesty, Austria-Hungary, Prussia, Belgium, Spain, Denmark, Italy, Portugal, Sweden, Norway, Netherlands, the Catholic Majesty, and the Sultan of Morocco. Four. "Nineteen twelve, France signs the bilateral Treaty of Fes and becomes the protectorate of the empire of Morocco in conformity with Articles one twenty-three of the Act of Algeciras as follows. Article one twenty-three and last, "All treaties, conventions, arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain in force. It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail."
So so France is using Article one twenty-three repetitively. Anytime a signatory power tries to now impede France, France says, you need to go back and read the treaty. Article one twenty-three says, I got power of all treaties, conventions, and arrangements. Do you know the word arrangement is a generic word? What does arrangement mean? That's A to Z is not defined. France controls all arrangements. Okay, while I'm making this point, pause right here for a second. If France had that much power over the treaties, can you imagine how much power Moors have over their own treaty? France was a third-party interloper who was gifted a pen, if the pen was transferred to France. France is not ISAR. The Moors are ISAR. France is Jacob ruling ISAR. I.e. the Moors who are asleep, who suffer from cognitive dissonance, don't realize how much power they have through their own treaties where allowing a trustee and managers overseeing our treaties to run the entire planet. If France had this much power, imagine how much power Moors have who have the rightful claim to the pen as a successor, as an inheritor, right? Based upon your consanguinity. If France had this much power and it had to be given to them, they didn't get it honestly internally through through birth. They wasn't born into royalty, they was given royalty. This is the reason why they lost it in nineteen fifty-six, because it wasn't genuine, it wasn't original. You can't lose your inheritance if in fact you are who you are because it is what it is when you're a Moor, the pen is just simply yours. That's why France lost the pen in nineteen fifty-six, cause there ain't what? Moors. So imagine how much power you got to run the planet. Let's continue.
Nineteen thirteen, France informs the United States of America and the United States Corporation that France has the ultimate jurisdiction throughout the Moors Empire. "In nineteen fourteen, World War One begins with France, Great Britain, Russia, Italy, Romania, Canada, Japan, and the US of A, which entered the war later in nineteen seventeen and fought against Germany, Austria-Hungary, Bulgaria, and the Ottoman Empire until nineteen eighteen. Keep in mind that France was ruling over these above-mentioned states regarding taxes and arms, et cetera, through the Moors treaties."
So 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 France signs the Treaty of Fes in nineteen twelve. In nineteen thirteen, France tells the whole world, guess what? They're the new sheriff in town. And his name is France. And France came to collect their money from everybody as a bookie. And all of a sudden, World War One jumps off in nineteen fourteen. Nineteen fourteen. Soon as France is in charge, a world war starts. Think about this, put put it together in your head, use common sense, what's happening? France is doing what? Being being what? They're creating mayhem, they're being belligerent.
They being a bully.
Okay, all right, let's, okay, mother.
So does that mean because we're not doing from a position of belligerence when we start taking, taking our power back? There should not be another war.
Correct. Cause we have to maintain peace and friendship, cause the title of our treaties. We're obligated to it, ain't a matter should we?
Right.
We're obligated to peace and friendship.
Right.
And the Charter says what? Peace and security, see? But when you give something to somebody, they didn't earn it, they might become a little belligerent. They get drunk on power, cause they know they don't deserve the powers, they try to take advantage of it as soon as they can. This is why people who win a lottery go broke. They didn't earn it. Let's continue. Section seven.
"The nineteen twenty League of Nations and its courts was governed primarily by France because the League of Nations was aware that France had the power of attorney over the Moors Empire, which also extended over the continent of Europe and its European states. By nineteen twenty-seven, all the colonial powers that signed the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty and the Act of Algeciras of nineteen oh six had relinquished their state names from the treaties except for France, the United States of America, and the Empire of Morocco. In nine, in nineteen thirty-nine, World War Two begins with the allied powers of France, Great Britain, Soviet Union, and the US of A against the Axis Powers of Germany, Italy, Hungary, Romania, Bulgaria, Slovakia, Croatia, and Japan until nineteen forty-five. Ten. "In nineteen forty-two, the Charter of the United Nations begins to assemble under the guidance of the United States of America and without the expressed consent of France as a contradiction to the Act of Algeciras nineteen oh six, Article one twenty-three as follows. Article one twenty-three and last, "All treaties, conventions, and arrangements of the signatory powers with Morocco remain in force. It is understood, however, that in case of conflict between their provisions and those of the present general act, the stipulations of the latter shall prevail."
So the United States of America in nineteen forty-two is starting to put together the United Nations Charter. And they're trying to rein in their order, trying to stop the scourge of war, right? The United States of America wants to control the pen, but they think France is done. And France comes out of the fire in nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-five, says, nah, I still got the pen. And United States of America, you can step to the back because France controls what? The treaties, treaty supreme of all the land. Keep in mind, the Sultans at this time still exist. From nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-five, Sultans still exist as an office, right? But France oversees everything in the empire, they don't even technically have to consult with the Sultan, cause the Sultan gave them what? All the power, right? So they go to the United States of America, say, yeah, United States of America, we know you're big and bad, you got the big army, but guess what? You don't have one of these. The power of the pen. The pen is mighty than a sword. This is what I'm proving to you. Even though France got beat down by Germany, they bounced back up with a pen and still beat the United States of America, and at that time, they had the industrial nation, they was powerful. And then France walked in with a, a pen and crushed them and took over the Charter that France wasn't even a part of constructing. They were not a part of the original coffee table meeting to talk about putting together the Charter. France comes in the end and says, y'all about done with that contract? Good. Good. You saved me a lot of time, I was a little busy. I'll take it from here, and you will sign it in French. Okay.
Is that why, does this have something to do with why the European Union came into place? Were they trying to get rid of France?
No, France controlled everything. France is every day is involved with every treaty organization on planet Earth. France got a lot, had, had a lot of power up until nineteen fifty-six, they still hold on to a lot now, right? Cause they've learned how to negotiate, cause they always been sitting in the seats of, of power, so they know how to have that conversation. They know how to control the rule, right? Okay, number eleven.
In nineteen forty-five, the US of A reluctantly relinquishes its de facto control over the UN Charter and paves the way for France to resume its governance over all treaties, conventions and arrangements regarding Article one oh two of the UN Charter's, Charter's miscellaneous provisions in lieu of depositing ratified applications at Madrid. Twelve, in nineteen fifty-six, the Sultan of Morocco, Morocco relinquished its, his status as Sultan and demoted himself to becoming the king of the small geographical location of the Kingdom of Morocco, thus leaving the vast empire void of an active central government. Subsequently, France relinquished its power of attorney status over the empire, thus leaving the Moors Empire void of a central governing body.
So what happened right here in section twelve? So in nineteen fifty-six, I'm gonna learn a little bit more about that real quick. France says, so the Sultan comes to France and says, we want our independence from you, of this Treaty of Fes of nineteen twelve. France, you've taken away all the powers of the Sultan. Sultan wanted his power, the pen back. France says, nah, I'm having too much fun with it. Why would I give it back to you? Make him take him, right? So France now has no choice but to give up the pen in nineteen fifty-six. Why? It's because the Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five gave all states on planet Earth the right to have independence, the human right. So France could no longer bully the Sultan of Morocco, cause the Sultan says, I no longer wanna be Sultan, I'll be king of my modern, organic little state, and you can't stop me, France, because I got a right to independence according to the Charter. So now, the Sultan is using the Charter to his advantage, to proclaim his independence. What should the Moors learn from this? If the Sultan did it, and he had to follow the instructions to get into statehood, then the Moors gotta do it too, in order to get the United States of America out of our jurisdiction, right? Cause that's what the Sultan had to do to get France out of his jurisdiction, he had to do what? He had to proclaim his independence through a constitution that's ratified, deposited and promulgated according to the Charter. See, France messed up, when they overs, when they started to oversee the Charter in nineteen forty-five, that's what gave the Sultan a chance now to get out of the contract of the Treaty of Fes of nineteen twelve. Because the Charter expresses, everyone got a right to what? Independence. Right? Okay, section twelve.
Thirteen, it is important to note that the various Sultans of Morocco did not have full powers over the empire from nineteen twelve through nineteen fifty-six because of the Treaty of Fes, Article three, enter Aliyah as follows. Article three, the government of the Republic pledges itself to lend constant support to His Sharifian Majesty against all dangers which might threaten his person or a throne or endanger the tranquility of his states. The same support shall be given to the heir to the throne and his successors.
So Muhammad the Fifth, following nineteen fifty-six, six, eh, enough of this, France. You've been running a whole show since nineteen twelve, there's been two wars. So the Sultan says, how do I get out of this contract of this Treaty of Fes nineteen twelve? France says, well, you gotta demote yourself from Sultan down to king. And France says, I'll give up the pen and we'll leave the pen in a neutral status. Nobody has. So the Sultan didn't have the pen, and neither did France, of what? The pen of the empire, which is a central government that oversees all states. The central government such as the United States of America has Washington DC. Washington DC is a central government, oversees what? The so-called fifty states. Imagine if Washington DC says, okay, there's no longer a legislative branch, judicial branch, an executive branch. We gonna just let the several states just run amok, but there's no governing central government that oversees the so-called fifty states. That's what happened. The empire no longer had a government to oversee all the empire. So guess who stepped up after that? The United States of America said, y'all just gonna leave the pen, sit in there like that? Okay, I'll pick it up. How could the United States of America pick it up? Because the treaties say what? The treaties about who? The Sultan and Moors governing the empire together. So when the Sultan stepped down, guess who automatically became the successor? Moors. And the Moors were still sleeping, and the pen was just sitting there like what? Excalibur. Excalibur is a sword. Who can pull the sword? Even the king of, in the, in the land where Excalibur was stuck in the rock, you know what I'm talking about? The king couldn't pull it, but he was overseeing that rock that had the sword in it, the Excalibur. Until the one person came and pulled the sword out the rock, which was who?
The Moors.
The, the real heir to the land could only pull it out. But in the meantime, the king was overseeing the pen, but not so much. He had limited powers. The United States of America has limited powers over the, over the Moors.
Extra territorial.
Extra territoriality jurisdiction. Who has full powers? Moors, if they just pull the sword out the rock, Excalibur. How do we pull the sword out the rock? Okay, I'll show you. This is how you pull it out. With a constitution. That's all it took. It's about fifteen to twenty loose, leaf pieces of paper. There's printed legislation on it and signed by the true inheritor at the bottom of it says, yeah, I'm a Moor, I'm Excalibur. I'm Isa. And the treaty says, the true name is what? Moor, Moroccan, Moors government. You have to understand what's happening here, Moors. We have delayed our own justice. We've been marching and praying. We've been writing writs and affidavits that have been patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious. Why? Because we're being led by stateless Moors, leading stateless people who don't have a state constitution that's been ratified, deposited and promulgated in accordance to international law. Where does international law come from? I'll show you as I start to raffle. It comes from your treaty as regarding chapter seven. The provisions, the instructions, the conditions set forth for you to be able to pull the sword of the pen out of Excalibur. It's just that simple. Why didn't we know this information? Isn't this common sense? This ain't rocket science? It's because we've been blocked by our own anti-pale face colonists. They have been working together to block us from our own pen. You gotta understand what's happening here, Moors. So, so what's the solution? We've been talking about problems all day, what's the solution? Pick up your pen and enact the constitution and deposit with who? The United Nations Charter, Article one oh two, why? Because France set it up, cause the Sultan gave France the obligations to have power over the empire. And once France stepped down and the Sultan stepped down, the Charter now is just existing, it's self-operating itself. Cause there's no one governing it anymore, the Sultan can't govern it, France can't govern it. Now it's just on automatic, all the states on planet Earth now have become what? Interdependent to run the Charter. And now Moors have to follow the instructions, because there's no more Madrid, it's the United Nations. But guess where the United Nations located? In Morocco, in the west, on this side of the world, where we already live. We don't have to go too far. So what should we take away from all of this? A, stop marching and praying and pick up a pen of confidence. B, stop writing patently frivolous and arbitrary capricious writs and affidavits that mean nothing, cause you're still negro black in color, even though you have an affairs. Why? Cause you didn't return to Morocco to consent to a competent Moor state. That's what the instructions say. We haven't been following instructions very well. But now that we know the instructions, you have no more excuses. Stop blaming the colonists. Yeah, are their fault? Yes, we already know this, tell me something I don't know. But allow me to tell you something you don't know, is that your own treaties gave you the right to enact laws through your competent state. And how do you end up with a competent state? Okay. You need a competent constitution that's been ratified, deposited and promulgated in accordance to international law. Deposited with the United Nations Charter, Article one oh two. And how do you end up with a state? You gotta have elections. You gotta vote for your officials of the state. You gotta have three branches of government. Executive branch, legislative branch, judicial branch. You have to have a flag and a seal, this is the mother flag. Where's your state flag, Moors? This is Ampac's state flag, that's part and parcel to the mother flag. The empire is what? What does this flag represent? The planet. China is a provincial government in Morocco. Spain is a provincial government in Morocco. Great Britain is a provincial state government in Morocco. Brazil is a provincial state government in Morocco. Ampac is a provincial state government in Morocco. Egypt is a provincial state government in Morocco, this is the mother flag of the planet. You still need to carve out your own latitude, longitude flag that represents your state. Your home, your small piece of the geographical location of Mother Earth. This is too easy. How do you think fifty-five states came to be in Africa? They followed the instructions. But yet, Moors on the west, walking around with two thousand dollar suits on, pointing fingers at Africa, cause they say they got flies on them, at least they got a state. What do you have? Civil rights. So as I start to raffle. We have to start procrastinating, right? Start the procrastination and get into legislation. I am back, it's mom.